We would organize it that way for you. So what you have there is the student responses, the categories they responded. Are you still on? Yes, okay workload, right. So some of them are very interesting. Like the 7% said remote was going very well, 17% said it could be going better. So when you look back at the, the how is remote learning going? You would expect to see a higher percent say it could be going better based on the answers to that question. And then there are some other places, like if you scroll down a little bit, Michelle. Workload, so 4% said the workload was going really well. Like they were able to manage it, it was the right amount of work. And then 7% said it wasn't going well. The majority of those were, there's too much work, not that there's, from students, there wasn't a lot of, we aren't getting enough work. And so those are pretty even and opposite opinions. Safety was an interesting one. And I did give you a couple of subcategories in safety, because that's kind of a big category. So there was the, and because there was a very polar opposites, there were students who said it's not going well because we need to do it better. And there were students who said, safety's not going well because we shouldn't have to wear a mask. They were the complete opposite, so I broke that out for you. And I had to put in the no more virus.
That would be even better.
Because I appreciate. So that's what I did, and I did the same process for the other two surveys, so let's go to the next one. The family survey, you can see all schools were represented, which is great. And there were 1,200 responses, 1,200.
Yeah, I was really pleased with how many responses we got. Talked about this before, when you send out surveys, you don't always get correct.
And this is, what we did with the family and teacher survey was we, I created one question where they had to respond to how each of these things were going. They are the same things. Their implementation of safety measures, testing my eyes, in-person learning, remote learning and tech. So I realize unfortunately, the, the issue with this kind of graph out of forms is that you don't see the numbers, but you can visually see where people are less happy with things and where they're more happy.
But like Brian said earlier too, that it's difficult now because of the families and like you said, they have big different pools. It's hard to say with the remote learning, are these parents that aren't as happy or think that's okay, are they elementary parents or are they high school parents?
Right.
Because there is a big difference there in remote learning.
Yeah, so that was one of the challenges, because you'll remember, you know, we, we had to, we made the survey very anonymous, right? So that it wouldn't be identifying for people and they could say what they felt they needed to say, and that does create limitations on what you can do with the data. And then this is the question about how comfortable they would be with students coming back full time.
When was this asked again?
Great question, I knew you were gonna ask that. So I looked, the survey opened on November 3rd. The majority of the responses, and when I say majority, I mean very big majority, for families and teachers, most of those responses were before the date that Michelle would identify as our sort of increase in number of cases. And before any, like before the high school week long, or seven day closure. There were only nine family responses that were after that date, and only seven teacher responses after that date. So most of them were before things started to pick up.
And this was when, when we were in green, not when we were changed to yellow.
Correct, yep. Somebody asked me if we should redo the survey, I said the problem with that now is that there's no way to ensure that the same people are answering.
Right.
You know, so it would be a case of not apples to apples.
The way to look at it is when we are green and we're not trending as low, as, as high right now, right? That's one way to look at it, when, if our county designation is green, we're not on the path we're on right now.
Yeah, there definitely is support for that, and there's a pretty strong contingency of ones and twos.
Yeah.
I mean clearly if you look at it just in numbers, there's more in the fours and fives, but there's something noticeable there in the ones and twos. And then in terms of the trends, this is my big celebration. The highest reported things were doing well, remembering this is not a dropdown. This is people generating their own statement about what they think we're doing well, it wasn't us suggesting anything, it was completely open response. And 30%, almost a third of the people who responded said communication was going well. So I highlight that as a celebration. I should say, this, the 30% is not 30% of all of the 1,200, it's 30% of the people who actually took the time to put something in that box. Okay, so that does change. And I didn't do a count of how many blanks there were, but there were noticeable, a noticeable number of parents who didn't put anything in those open response boxes. It wasn't required. In fact, I, I noticed that more students filled in the open response boxes than families, so. And then you'll see other things like workload, I did break down the parent response, it was kind of even. 3% said it was too much work, and 4% said it was not enough. Safety was rated as something we're doing very well. And again, on the other side, where we could be doing safety better, it was same thing as students. 4% had concerns that it should be better, and 1% wanted fewer restrictions. And I also broke out the remote, because there were people who were very clearly saying, we should have, there should be more, excuse me, teacher instruction on remote days. And then there were other things that were more about the structure of the day, more structure for kids, clearer expectations, not really about getting instruction, more about the structure of the day for students. And technology was in there. I had to do the everything and nothing, because it did make me laugh a little bit, some people said, what are, what are you doing while everything? A few people said, what are you doing while nothing? Luckily, that was the 0.1%, I only put it there because I did nothing on the other side. Okay, and then the last one is staff. So the first question was about their role, you'll see it's mostly classroom teachers, but other groups are represented as well. Optional for them to identify the school. And then this is there from your perspective, how are the following things going? And it's the same order as it was on the family survey. And then the, how comfortable would you be with students coming full time? It's almost mirror opposite.
And again, I'm just clarifying, this was done on that same date in November, when we were in green and when we were on a better trend than we are right now.
That's correct, seven responses came in after November 9th.
It also makes me wonder too, like what, what is it that makes them uncomfortable? Do you know what I mean? Like, because parents are like, yeah, send them back, the teachers are like, eh, let's hold off. So for me, it's like, well, what is it that is holding the teachers back? What is it that they're seeing that?
And I think you'll see some of that here. So safety was still stated as something that we're doing well, 43%. But there is, there were 21% of people who also had a recommendation about safety that was suggested improvement. So I think if I were thinking about it, that's probably, Michelle can weigh in on this, but I think that's probably the biggest component of their hesitation.
What is it about safety though, that?
Yeah, so I'd have to, if I remember correctly, and this is just me thinking after reading all those. I think, you know, there are people who, who maybe said that distancing was challenging at times, or enforcing mask wearing was challenging at times, even though things are going well. But I think there are places where they feel like, if I were to interpret it, silly interpretation, where they feel like increasing the numbers and the closeness and things like that compromise, may compromise some of the safety procedures we have in place, is the way I would interpret most of what I read.
I also remember some of the comments being projecting. They were projecting about cold and flu season that we're heading into. So even though this was while we were still in green, and that's a great point, they were projecting, where are we going? We are already seeing cases, and, and where are we going as we head into the time that historically and typically is, is the most challenging in terms of health for us?
That's very good.
Which actually, we have worked, the masks, the hand washing and the distancing are actually working in our advantage when it comes to the flu season. That's actually, you know, that, that, the experts are saying that that will work in our advantage, but.
Very true, we're seeing that.
So you can see this breakdown for teachers. The other thing I should say always about open response is that there wasn't a limit on, so lots of people maybe gave multiple things that were going well. So there, you know, you can't just look at it as, the ones who said safety only said safety, but I counted every response. I think that's it for me, unless people have.
Have any questions they'd like to ask, comment?
About the remote engagement, we could be doing better. 27% said that we could be doing that better, like in what ways?
Yeah, so I specifically put the word engagement and not just remote learning.
Right.
Because to a T, just about every single teacher who said that could be going better, spoke about the challenges they have with students engaging on their remote day.
Yeah.
So it, it could have been their challenges getting students to Zoom sessions, because there are Zoom sessions that happen for students on remote days. It might be enrichment, it might be a special ed. Or it could have been their, the fact that they don't necessarily complete the activities that are assigned to them on remote days. So it was, it was one of those two things, but almost every single remote response was about engagement.
So, so buildings will have this information so that they'll, like they can just, not decide, but they can see, sort of like our engagement's going well, or we need to sort of figure out new plans for this, you know what I'm saying? Like they'll be able to, okay.
Because like I said, open response, really the most power in those, those responses is like me being able to give Scott his.
Yeah.
And for him to look for things that are specific to EL. So I told them that I would break things out for them, and they can get their own.
Thank you so much. Right, any other questions right now? We are now still, let's publicly state, we are still in yellow, I believe, or are we, our county designation is still yellow?
I don't think anything came out on Friday after Thanksgiving.
I didn't think so.
As far as I know, that yellow is, holds until this Friday, says.
So as you said Karen, we're gonna be using this information, you're gonna be going to every school to show them, and try to improve whatever it is we're not doing well.
I will provide each principal with the data that's specific to their school, because we have the place where, some of it's gonna be a little mixed for families, right? Because again, they chose all the schools that apply. But you can read some things in there and know there are some, there are some high school specific, or any other school. So I will provide them that data so they can use it with their leadership teams, take a look at that feedback and make decisions about what their next steps are.
Thank you for pulling all this together, I think, I think this is very helpful for just to see, just a check-in in the community and where people are feeling, or what their sort of reactions are to how we've, you know, kind of progressed along so far, so thank you. Thank you, I just think it's important to state that this, you know, we need to check in every once in a while. Thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanna, we go back to green, are we going to consider going back for, you know, increasing the amount of time kids are gonna go to school? I mean Fauci, Dr. Shaw, they're both saying school is one of the strengths of control, like there's no school transmission, which I think is really, it's a, it's a testament to the work that's being done. There are cases that are popping up in this school, there's going to be, I mean, exactly that, the one, I mean, there's a lot, that was really great data that I'm gonna probably dig into later, but, you know, 70% of the students, 70, 70% of the parents, 38% of the staff say yes, when it's safe, wants to do that. How do we qualify when it's safe? And are we gonna go with, my, you know, I'm not gonna put an indictment on this green-yellow, because green is a county.
Right.
And, you know, like that nursing home in Lewiston, they're making us yellow on, on their own. But I'm just curious, is it something we're gonna entertain, or is that something for next fall? Like, we just, can we, can we discuss it? Is it worth, because again, the data, the science saying this is a safe place to do it, we could probably do that.
And for me personally, I think I've always looked through the school department to say, what does the science say? What is, what's the latest information we have? We've asked for information on how other schools are getting their kids back in-person learning in a collaborative way between educational staff, parents and school committee that has to approve it. So I think this always has to be something in the front of our mind, how do we increase in-person learning? How do we do it? How do we, um, in a way that's safe for everyone? So it's my goal, as I'm, you know, as I'm sitting here, I want to increase as much as I can safely, I'm gonna keep saying that, safely. Because, no, I'm not looking to ask the committee to make a motion to push every back end five days a week, that's absolutely not, not okay, take those steps. I want to see collaborative efforts forward to do that. So I look at the school department to say, what is the science telling us? What's our county designation? How are people feeling about it? I, I think it's tricky to remove the feelings from the science piece. So I think, to me, this has to be an ongoing conversation about how and when can we be creative about it? I also think it's amazing, the, the response we got from the survey. And I, I know I said this before, I'm impressed, but you know what, it takes a village, it takes an entire community to get through this. It's not just the school department, it's the entire community of Auburn that's gonna get us through this, and we can do it. But I think the fact that they, so many people responded and are part of the collaboration to either get kids back in school safely, or, you know, to get through this. So I, I, you know, I want to thank everybody that, that filled out the survey and took the time to do this, students, parents, the staff, because it's a collaboration. It's a collaboration among all of us, all of us in this community, to get these kids in back safely, and so thank you for everybody that filled out the survey. I think part of what the science will show us too, is who are the first ones to get the vaccines? What is that going to, what is that going to allow schools to do or not to do? I think all that's gonna play a part as well, but if I left anything out or overstepping, I apologize.
No, I think you asked great questions, and actually, it's a great segue to Michelle's piece. We wanted to share with you tonight what we go through when we have a positive case, whether it's a staff person or a student. And if it's okay, I'd like to bounce down to that section of my report. I think it'd be really interesting for you, we get asked this a lot. So Michelle, if you wouldn't mind queuing up your, your presentation?
Have the PowerPoint slides that you can take that afterward. Thank you, Dr. Brown. So keeping our, I think, our, always, safety's always our number one priority. And so now we're faced in this time of pandemic, to learn about new ways and new things that influence the safety of our schools. So tonight, we're gonna share with you how we address a positive case, identified positive case of COVID-19. You're getting robo calls, so you're, I know you're aware of that, I know that Dr. Brown is surprised of, of cases, but the community is hearing about it daily right now. And so how, what happens in our schools when we have an identified positive case?
So can I interrupt just for one second? The, I've been asked about, and this sort of seems, you just mentioned that the, the phone calls. What are, I think I have an understanding of it, what are, what are our, and maybe you'll go over that tonight. What are our requirements that we need to, in how we communicate a positive case to the community? Is it that we need to communicate that to everyone, even if you don't have a child in the school? Or I think someone said, can it just be isolated more school by school? If the case is at Fairview, we call the Fairview School. So I think that's just one of those areas that parents are like, it's every night. So I'm just wondering, what are, what are our requirements? And I know you'll get to it, but.
I don't have it on my slide, so I don't know, I just.
Okay.
We follow a SOP, a standard operating, that's provided to us by, it's developed by the CDC in collaboration with DOE, but it's mostly from the CDC. And in there, they talk about community notification. And so it talks about notifying the community when there is a case of a positive situation. So right now, we're following that, I think that's a great question, clarification, because quite honestly, what I'm learning is that they're learning is a little bit ahead of our learning. And so I think fair question to ask some clarification on that.
Okay, so for right now, when there is a positive case, the community is notified, everyone is notified, and that is, or the SOP that you have there. So I think that's really important to make sure that that's out there. Thank you, Michelle.
So tonight, we want to share with you how we address, like I said, if there's a positive case identified, one of our schools. I'll walk you through the scenario, and through that, I'm gonna also talk about some key concept that influence our process, the process that we developed and that we use and continually check and adjust along the way. So when we learn that someone is positive, usually through a phone call from the principal, sometimes the nurse, mostly the principal, to me, making me aware of that. And whether it's a student or it's staff, doesn't matter, that's usually the process. And at that point, we gather a team together, and we do that through Zoom. And the team initially and throughout the time comprised of me, the principal, the building principal, the school nurse at times is involved in that. To a great degree along the way, less so now, but Deputy Chief Byfield from the Safety Director of the City of Auburn is there. And, and Dr. Hanson and Dr. Brown also come into those conversations. Johansson and Dr. Brown also come into those conversations. So we gather, we gather together via Zoom and we're determining, we're looking at information that has come in about this case. And mostly to determine what steps need to be taken and to determine the extent of the exposure in the school. That's a big outcome of. So first thing we are going to, we do is we look at that, that particular person's situation, what has happened? When did they become symptomatic? When did they get tested? Those sorts of things to help us determine the extent of the exposure. And I'll walk, we're going to walk through that process. So we'll start with the person who has a positive test, comes to our attention. They are going to go into what is referred to as isolation. Isolation lasts for a minimum of 10 days from the first onset of symptoms or the positive test. And you can see what isolation means on that slide. That person is usually, and that family, if it's a student, are being communicated with by this CDC investigator. And there's a contact made there, their primary care, healthcare provider is providing them with information. And we're just working with them to understand the situation, to provide support and as they're moving through, trying to digest what it is. And we're also looking at when would we estimate that that, that the CDC would release them to come back? Because the CDC does track the case, even right now, while they're pretty strong, tracks that case and would let that family know or the staff member know the date of return. That's again, at least 10 days and that they're symptomatic. That's kind of the first pieces of information that help us forward to determine, again, the extent of the exposure in our school. Let's use an example. So we have a student who, on the 11th of November, tests and the test comes back positive. And so we would count out, just like you see on this calendar, 10 days to land that, land her on a Saturday. And she's cohort A. So she can come back to school on the 23rd of November. This is all sort of what we do. Begin there. Because now we need to, again, like I said, look at the possible exposure within the school. So that's that student, but what about other people who were in contact with that student? So we are going through a process of what is referred to, and you've probably heard the term, contact tracing. And that kind, that process is simply to identify the students who, or the individuals who are considered close contact with a person who's been identified as positive COVID. And it, we would look at the students, the individuals who are considered close contact over a 40, a 48-hour period prior to symptom onset or the positive test, when the person took the test. Okay, came back. So what does close contact mean? It means direct contact with the person who is identified positive. That direct contact is within six or 15 minutes or more cumulatively. Go in and out of a situation multiple times in a course a day. That would be combined. Or the CDC, in the case of schools, this is a, this is a unique criteria for schools, is a member of the classroom. So they're not going to ask classroom teachers to try to figure out who was within six feet for cumulative 15 minutes. They're just going to say anyone within that classroom during a period of time that's more than 15 minutes are going to be counted as close contacts automatically. So again, at the bottom, you see there, only the people identified as close contact who have the direct contact are the ones who go into quarantine.
So when we get, like your, the robo calls that come through and say, so tonight it was Fairview, East Auburn. Those families who have children in that cohort, in that classroom are personally called to say, this is what's happening. There's a child in your classroom and so there's a child in your child's classroom, so they're, that's a positive, therefore we are quarant, you need to quarantine. And that comes quickly, right? Parents and families need to be pretty ready that you are hearing, it comes quickly. Okay.
It does. I can speak from person, me too.
Yeah, and I, I, let's say this, I do know that that's what's happened. I just want to make sure that it is absolutely out there, that that is not how families, the robo call is not how families should get the information. And then they tried to figure out, is that a kid in my class? Because that does happen. If they don't receive a personal phone call from the administrator, then they should not consider themselves needing to be putting themselves into quarantine and direct contact.
So let's go back to our scenario. We have our student test positive on the 11th, cohort A. So we're going to go back 48 hours. We're going to, any contacts that they've had that met the criteria that we just talked about on the 9th or the 10th, not in school on the 11th. We're going to consider whether or not they meet the criteria for, for close contact. And those are the people who, as you said, are going to be contacted directly by somebody from the school. That's our cohort A student. He is, he's ninth cohort A. What if we had another student who tested on the same day, but he's cohort B? So his last day is on Friday, the 6th. So we go back 48 hours from when he tested, he was asymptomatic, so we're going to use the test. Go back 48 hours, 9th and 10th, who are the close contacts in school on those days? No one. He was not in school. So we would have no contact tracing at that time. Sense, the difference. So sometimes it can be a good number of students that we have to contact and staff. And sometimes it can be none. We don't have to do any contact.
But does the CDC still do contact tracing on that person?
Outside of school.
Outside of school, yeah, okay.
We're doing the tracing for them in school. So as we've said, you're going to be, those, those close contacts are going to be contacted directly by, again, a member of the team. In most cases, it's going to be somebody from the school. It's going to be the principal. In the case of the middle school and the high school, the assistant principals play a big role in that. The nurse at the school will do that. So it'll be someone that they know. They're having cases, Mr. Fairchild and myself, we've helped if the numbers were big addressing that. Call on the administrator and those of that situation. But again, so we're calling and we're notifying directly that this person is considered a close contact. And this, because they're considered a close contact, that person has to go into quarantine with a minimum of 14 days since the last day of contact with the person with, identified with COVID-19. Then again, we talk to them about what it means to quarantine and provide that sort of easier solution. So we're providing them with information, allowing them to ask questions, answering questions to the best of our abilities. We're not epidemiologists, but we are learning quickly about this. And if we can't answer a question, we're helping people access the resources they need to get the information. One thing that we go over clearly is that if a person receives, will be asked, should I go get tested or should I have my student tested? And when, in talking about that, we're really clear about that if a person is tested and they test negative, we like to have that information. It gives us good information about what's going on in our school or isn't going on in our school. But it will not release that person from quarantine. And that, that person would still need to continue with a 14-day quarantine.
So I think some new information may have come out today too, in regards to quarantining, if you, if you're not the person who tested positive. I'm just wondering, I think, I think it may have just changed seven to 10 days, I think may be the new recommendation.
Seven days after receiving a negative test and 10 days without, that's what the CDC.
So we, I've been watching that in the media, but I haven't seen it in our protocol yet. So I'll take a look at, for that. So let's go back to our scenario. We have our student, right? Know that she tested on the 11th, but the last day of exposure she was in school was the 10th. So those students and staff that we're talking to, we're using the 10th if they were there on that day, if they were there that day of school on the 10th, or if they weren't and they were there on the 9th, we'd use that last day and we would start counting 14 days in quarantine. See, that brings that particular cohort, for the most part, to the 25th would be the last day of quarantine. Means that they could return on the 26th if we had school. So because this is cohort A, that cohort would return on the 30th of November.
To live function.
Thank you. To live instruction. They would be remote, thank you. That's a very important point. They would have gone, pivoted to remote instruction during that time and return to, to in-person instruction on the 30th. So that's the process. It's involved, it's lengthy, it takes up quite a bit of time. It doesn't know working hours. It happens anytime, any day. And we want to be responsive. We don't want to say, well, we'll do that tomorrow and let kids come into school and have that exposure continue. Or we don't want to say, we'll do that on Monday. So we, we do this whenever we need to do this. We give people the information as soon as we can. As soon as we can go through the process and get the information. And we try not to rush it because we don't want to unnecessarily alert people. We want to be thorough and, and sure. But we give it to them within that same day that we receive it. So some observations that we've had in talking about this as administrators and our management team. It may seem like a lot of calls to you. We've had 33, I want to just make sure I'm giving you the right number. Had 32 cases up to today. Out of that, five of those cases happen either September or October.
And that's staff, student, that's everyone. Okay.
So we've had 27 cases in the month of November and beginning of December.
Does that mean positive tests?
Positive tests that we went through this, that we knew about, I'll be clear about that too, that we knew about and went through this process. What that says to, what we're, we're beginning to see is that, that just as, as you said, Mr. S, that implementing the standard precautions with fidelity has kept this from being a widespread event. That the cohorts have lowered the number of students with potential exposure. And subsequently, for everyone who has to get contacted on that robo call, we're usually talking about per classroom, anywhere between eight people to maybe our largest is in the 20, maybe close to 30, I think.
Well, and if you have high, does it change for high school where classes come out?
So exactly what you're saying, that elementary and middle, they're smaller cohorts, they don't move, they're stable. So you get one group of students in classroom impact. When you're talking about Edward Little, now have a student who has four of those that they're traveling to and who they are, they're, they are impacted with in, in those settings. The limited movement throughout the day beyond their classrooms of really being very efficient about where students are. They're in their spaces and not doing a lot of moving around has helped a great deal. If it was a typical day, February 2020, it would, these would have much bigger impact. Those cohorts have lessened the need to have full closures saw in the case of Auburn Middle School.
One of the things too, like you're, what you're kind of piggyback on what you're saying, if we decide that, you know, we want to increase the classroom sizes as this is still going on and go to the three-foot rule as opposed to the six-foot rule, then you're going to have more, there's going to be much more exposure to, even if it's an elementary class, you're going to have more kids in that class. So then one kid is positive. If one student is positive, that will expose so many more children than what we're dealing with now. And then, yeah. So that's something to consider as well.
We've noticed particularly in November that there's improvement in following the screening procedures. So we, by everyone. So the screening procedures, I gave you that magnet tonight. These are going to go out to all families of students next week. So what we're noticing is that we might see or hear about someone who is choosing to self-quarantine in a family because they had exposure to somebody else. And so they're getting tested and they're saying, we're getting tested and we know that we have to self-quarantine until we get the results of our testing. So we're hearing about that frequently and I think that's helping. And, and I've, we've seen cases where somebody in the family has tested positive subsequently, but they've been out for more than 48 hours prior to that test, having that test taken or before symptoms. So it's limited the impact, the need to contact trace. So that self-quarantining is helping as well. Uh, what we've also noticed is this impacts staffing and that, that we ran into in Auburn Middle School in particular. And when Dr. Brown and the administration from, from Edward Little High School went to Auburn Middle School to help out because there were so many staff that were out on quarantine, either connected with the school or with something else outside of school, because this isn't just happening in school. Where they needed to be out for quarantining or other issues that were going on. It, it impacts us in a, in different ways. So those cohorting, we've been talking about making some adjustments to how we respond and we, and we did indeed do that this last week. And as you can see, this takes time. So we have a school safety consultant that we've used in the past, had an opening in that position. And so in order to fill that, we brought on Ray Lucier and you, some of you may be familiar with him. He used to be the city Safety Director. He's retired and he's agreed to come back on as a consultant and he will help with some of this when he comes on in January, I believe. So those are some of the observations we've had that I wanted to share with you. So any other questions? This was great dialogue thus far and things to follow up on.
What are we doing with siblings that may be presumptive positive? Are they still following the 10, well, the 10 and 14? Are we assuming that they're in isolation slash quarantine as well?
So if they've been identified presumptive positive, we've been told we're So if they've been identified presumptive positive, we've been told we're to respond to them as if they're positive.
Do they follow this in protocol?
Do you have a breakdown of the 27 in November staff who tested positive versus students?
Yes.
Do we have it?
I can get that to you.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I can definitely. I do have all of that.
All night, wait. Thank you.
I might be able to get it before the end of the night, but yes.
Any other questions, comments, Michelle?
Thank you, Michelle, so much. I think this, it just, it provides a great clear picture. We know what happens behind the scenes. When we get that phone call, a lot has gone into the contact tracing before we get the phone call. So thank you.
I have one question, sorry.
Yeah.
So, and actually, Brian, this happened to us. We, my, you know, my son was part of, he was exposed and he was part of the quarantine and he was negative, thank goodness. But getting a test was very challenging. I called his pediatrician on Monday and they couldn't see him at urgent care until Thursday to get a test that would take another five days to return, to come back to, to come back positive or negative. Luckily, I have the means that I was able to go to Portland to go to their urgent care and he got a test and within 24 hours, we found out he was negative. Now, of course, that brings up an equity issue because I was fortunate enough that I could get to Portland. I was off, I could go down and do this. But even being in the medical field, it was very challenging to try to navigate how to get this test. And I do know that they have more places here because at the time, these were opening on Friday. Because everybody was telling me, when I called, they say, oh, well, there's a testing place in Auburn. I said, yeah, well, it's not opening till Friday. Has that, the testing spots that they have opened now, has that been working well so that people are, it's a lot easier to get a test and that they're not going through the same issues that I went through to try to get my son tested?
Just personally, I know that it has, it's very difficult to get a test right now if you are not symptomatic because of the increase, at least with people that I work with. But it is hard to.
We're not suggesting that people get a test. Is that correct, Michelle? We're not suggesting that they do that, that's simply to quarantine for 14 days.
It always comes up in the conversation. That is not a requirement of ours.
It wasn't, but it was suggested that if we felt we needed to. And the thing with COVID is when you have kids that are 17, they may not be symptomatic. They mostly will be asymptomatic and they could still have it. And because I work in the medical field, my husband works in the medical field, we wanted to make sure that, yes, he was positive or no, he wasn't, because we don't want to bring it to people who it will be detrimental to. Because when you look at our patients and our patient population, they're at high risk. So we did it out of concern for our own patients as well. So, and that's why I was asking, how are the new?
The facility that's opening up across the way is basically, you still need to have an appointment. And as far as I know, they do offer quicker tests, but on just a regular test, it's still taking the length of time to get the test back.
Is it 24 hours or is it?
No.
No. Could be 10, 10 days.
Up to 10, yeah.
The state lab can't keep up with that. But Walgreens has a, you can go in now too and get a rapid test.
Yeah.
But I think that's an appointment and you've got to do the appointment too, but it's 15 minutes.
Yeah, but one of the first questions they're going to ask you, are you showing any signs of the, please, you know, if you're asymptomatic?
Do you have a list of testing places that you offer people, Michelle, when you make phone, when they ask?
And that comes through, Deputy Chief Feifield has given a list that we can make available to folks if they need that. What I think has been interesting is just what you're talking about is a very complex endeavor. And so we will say, we try to keep our ear to the ground on where to go now because it changes. You have to wait so long if you're trying to get into this place, but you know B Street right now seems to be getting people in. And if you sit in for our staff, there are some places that if they disclose that they're an educator, then they will get bumped up. So I think it's essential workers, those who are determined to be essential workers, will get some preference in that.
I think that would be a great idea though, Karen, like what you said, having a list of places to go. Because I know for me, I mean, even though I'm in the medical field, I was at a loss. I'm like, what do I do? You know, where do I get a test? Because you hear on the news, oh, you can get a test anywhere. And then you start looking and no, you can't. You know, you need a doctor's order at certain places. You don't need a doctor's order here. You need a, you know, and they'll say, oh, CBS has it. You call CBS, there's no slots. There's no appointment slot. It was kind of difficult. And for someone who, you know, has no knowledge of the medical field at all, I just feel like it would be even more frustrating.
So we do have a list and that does come from Deputy Chief Feifield. It is just what you said, you might run into the same thing. One week CBS might have open slots, Walgreens might be the place to go, down on Great Falls Plaza might be the place to go. We try to help if there's help needed.
Yeah.
Can I just, sorry, just to bring up, because I know here for, about traveling, I think it's important to note too, that the school does require a different protocol than the main CDC does recommend. I don't know if, Michelle, you want to touch base on that, that our school reentry is different than if you were, if you didn't have kids in school. The main CDC protocol is different than Auburn's is.
So the city of Auburn has a procedure that they've identified for traveling and testing upon return or quarantine. So you know that you have, you've probably seen from the CDC that you, if you travel outside to a non-exempt state, that you need to have a 14-day quarantine upon reentry, or you can get tested. And they have a certain procedure that they put out. The city of Auburn has identified a, either the quarantine or you need to be tested 48 hours after return to the state. So it is different.
Right. So just for parents traveling, just really contact the school nurse because some people have plans, read the main CDC guidelines, but then come to find out your, basically your kid has to stay up two weeks.
Yes.
Even if they have a negative test upon returning to Maine. So.
We did put some of that out after that came forward, that, you know, some people were using some different guidelines. So thank you.
You know, maybe we should suggest to you, like, once, if you do get that call, can maybe suggest calling your doctor's office and seeing where to go from there. At least there's a point of reference with the doctor's office.
Exactly what we do actually is whenever they, because we're not, we'll say it again, we're not epidemiologists. If there's any question that gets beyond our scope, it's we really encourage you to contact your primary care health professional. They know you, they know your family, they can help navigate the tough questions that you're asking in a better way than we can.
And especially just because I know, I know, just got diagnosed, symptoms were on Wednesday. Their test came back positive on Saturday and it's now Wednesday and the CDC still has not called them. So it's just, you know, that's, that's how backed up they are.
Backlog.
So at this point, it's, unless they would have known what to do, it's everybody they, you know.
With the white flag.
Right.
Well, they contacted us, but it was towards the end of the quarantine that they contacted. And he was negative.
That is another reason why we're contacting.
Which is in that, that's great that you're at least giving them the guidelines because some people either don't want to know or, I mean, they don't know. So kudos to you guys for taking it, because I know it's a lot of time for you guys to contact, contact trace, but.
Yeah, I don't remember this in any educational side. But, you know, halfway through a doctorate and still nothing about contact tracing in any of the programs I've taken. So thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much for putting your boots on the ground and digging in and helping out our community. Thank you so much. All right, I think we're good? All right. So superintendent's report, Dr. Brown.
Thank you very much. I have a couple of things to share with you. As Michelle said, November 20, we got pressed into service and that was Mr. Rineer and I and a bunch of EL administrators sub at the middle school. And it just so happened that day was the day I had to meet with the subcommittee of the state construction committee of the state board. And so I said, come on, kids, let's go. So I asked Peter Robinson to set up the ProAVI system to help me use it. It was already set up. I said, kids, you want to, want to go? And it was the best lesson. And it turned out that this is the first class, they're seventh graders of the new high school. And so they got to meet the subcommittee, they introduced themselves. The kids were rock stars, Abdi and Keegan and a bunch of others. They sat and they listened and they expressed their absolute enthusiasm for the new high school, which is what the committee wanted to hear. And then the committee voted unanimously and some of the kids voted too, but I had to explain to them that it was the committee voting, not the kids, that they would recommend to the state board of education, which is the second thing on my report a week from today, for the design and funding approval. And with that, and I have absolute confidence that will go well, we should go out to bid. And those bids will be back in February, Adam, if I recall. And so we look to put a spade in the ground, probably in March or April. And we'll keep you updated in terms of how those bids come in. And it's really moving. It's a very exciting project. But it was really fun because the kids who are in seventh grade, they're going to be the first class, they're going to be sophomores when they, when that building opens. So it was kind of a good day. I'm just FYI again, in January, to get on your radar, we're going to do a state of the schools report January 6. We're also going to bring to you a special education report. We've been looking at our out of district placements and our current capacity and what we might do to bring that back. And so Mr. Fairchild will be queuing that up for you that day. And the two actually fit pretty well together. And then, believe it or not, it's time for the next quarterly review for the superintendent. And Karen and I have set a date of January, I think it's 20th. So that will be that. So that's, that is the extent of my report. I really wanted to cede my time, Michelle, because we felt it was important that you hear the process that we go through. And Michelle sold herself a little bit short. She's put in, because I know this for sure, every weekend between the end of August and now, because that's, that's when we get our cases. So, Michelle, I want to publicly thank you for that because it's a huge amount of time. And you have become our resident willing volunteer, or maybe you were voluntold, one of the other, to step up. And you really have. Auburn is being held out as an exemplar for other school districts and other communities as a place that's really getting it right. So that's a credit to you.
Thank you. All right. Contact tracing. Any questions or questions for Dr. Brown? All right, moving on. Chairperson's report. Dr. Brown and myself met with the city council on Monday night, it seems like a long time ago, only Wednesday, to pass along our comments or changes, some wordsmithing that we had done to the charter, particularly articles four and eight. And I believe my understanding is that those suggestions were well received. So they were in alignment with the vision that our, the charter review going over. But I will absolutely bring it over to Mr. Carrier with the city council.
Well, as you said, we met Monday night and the changes that you put forth were well received. The staff will review and turn them over to legal to do the fine tuning on them and make sure everything meets muster. And then I received an email today from Brian Wood, the assistant city manager, that has a portal for anybody that wants to look at the changes as they're written. This portal will be able to be utilized by the public so that anything else that wants to be put in there or any other suggestions be put into the charter review will be available. I'll send it out to everybody after the meeting tonight.
Any questions for Carrier? All right, seeing none. Moving on. Committee reports. Finance Subcommittee. Meet next week. Policy Subcommittee. Or any other committees?
Oh, we're meeting.
Okay. Shelley and I met today for the committee. We went over a couple of things for the policy that we did. So collection of textbooks, things like that. So those were our comments, suggestions will be passed along to the show and then to the policy committee and it'll all sort of roll out from there. Any other committees? All right, seeing none. Moving on. Old business. Can I entertain a motion to approve policy BEDB, public participation at school committee meetings for a second read?
Removed.
Second.
Both. Questions, comments? Nuns, vote. All those in favor? None opposed? Motion passes. Policy, the administration's been talking about it for 20-something years and sometimes these letters still come out of my mouth a little. BEDB, school committee meeting agenda, motion to approve policy BEDB.
Removed.
Second.
Thank you, Brian. Questions, comments? Nuns, vote. All those in favor? Policy, thank you. Motion passes. Policy BBBAA, student rep to the school committee, can I entertain a motion to approve policy BBBAA?
Removed.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Right, questions, comments about that one? Base 30 voting. Sorry. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, moving on. New business. Motion to ratify the 2021, 2024 bargaining agreement between the Auburn School Committee and the Auburn Administrators Association. Can I entertain a motion, please?
Removed.
Simpson, second?
Second.
I don't know who grabbed that one. I heard Pam. I'll grab Pam. Any questions or comments about that one? The only comment I would have is thank you to the association as well as the school committee members, Faith and Brian, who worked pretty swiftly, I would say, to get that one. So thank you very much for that one. All right, all those in favor? None opposed? Motion passes. Winter sports offering, the 2020, 2021. You have in your packet what the, what the updated, give a PDF of that in your updated packet. So can I entertain a motion to approve, pose winter sports for 2020, 2021? Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? I was going to say, I think Todd, I just noticed out here.
Well, sports, Todd, you know I'm going to ask a question.
Of course.
Can you expand a little bit on the swimming restrictions?
Yes. So the swimming restrictions in your packet, we're still going to have varsity boys and girls swimming. We hope to start on Monday if we are designated green with practices at the Y. And competitions this year will be virtual, but those would start in January. But I think the restrictions you're speaking of is the YWCA where we have the pool rental is restricting three swimmers per lane and they only have six lanes at the Y. So my math isn't very good, but that's 18 athletes in the pool at a time. Typically, in an hour for our pool, we would probably have roughly, and Dave, you know as well as I do, probably 25 to 30 Edward Little swimmers. And we also have several co-op individuals from St. Dom's, Levitt, Hebron, maybe Oxford Hills. And in conversation with the pool director at the Y and with Coach Morrison, we, we really felt like we needed to take care of the Edward Little students first and take care of, see what those numbers are. And then if we didn't get to that 18, then we would open it up.
Okay.
But, you know, our, our hope is that we would have well over 18. The other issue with the Y is that they have other renters and other renters that have chosen not to use the time because of the three-person restriction. So we're actually going to be able to get an hour and a half, which we may be able to expand that a little bit. But this, I mean, I sent this to you maybe 10 days ago. So everything is fluid and changing on a, on a daily basis.
Someone close to me asked me if I would ask this question. Makes sense. Thank you.
Yep.
And no, no state tournaments I'm seeing for hockey and basketball.
Yeah, no, no.
Unbelievable.
Right now, for those team sports, there will be no heel points taken, no tournament standings, those types of things. The hope is if things go well in January and February, that the first two weeks in March, we could have some type of county round robin competition when we get to that point. Those, those are kind of the hopes and dreams as we look forward. Those, those are kind of the, the hopes and dreams as we look forward.
All right.
I want to acknowledge too, the middle schools got some things going on, which really appreciated. Talked to a bunch of-
Yes, and, and just to kind of get the word out there, the family ID online registration portal is open for both the high school and the middle school. So I'd encourage everybody to get signed up as quick as possible. Please be patient as we're still working to find an administrative assistant, so I'm actually physically going in and checking physicals. And the fax machine was going all day as doctor's offices were sending those physicals to me. So just some patience on that piece. The, the Auburn Middle School is, is moving forward. We had our meeting this afternoon and they're going to stay right with the high school. They'll begin practices the 14th, once again, if we're designated green. And then we'll start the competitions January 11th. The one change from there that wasn't included on that, we had a question about unified basketball, which is, in my opinion, one of the best programs that we run in educational-based athletics. The state suggested that we keep it in the winter season. Our league, the Kennebec Valley Athletic Conference, voted last week to move it to the month of May for a couple of reasons. That population is, is, you know, a challenge sometimes, you know, keeping masks on and those kinds of things. And we wanted to make sure that we could provide a great experience for those kids. And we felt by moving it to May, it would loosen some of the restrictions on gym time and availability. And speaking to the unified coaches, they're, they're excited about that.
Other questions, comments? All right, we have a motion on the table.
Is it too soon to, like spectators? Or is that, is that, is that dynamic as well?
I, well, I can do some quick hitters for you from the MPA that are different from the fall for the winter. And they are every athlete, coach, game personnel will wear a mask the entire time. The only exception is swimming. And the exception, expectation is the swimmer will wear their mask to the starting block and it is in the guidelines, they will have a waterproof bag with them to put their mask in, take it off, complete their race and then put the mask back on. But one of the things that really needed to happen through the government agencies working with the MPA is that we were going to wear the masks being inside for basketball, for ice hockey. So we, we've purchased some of those athletic masks. Hockey has a specific mask that we've, we've got for us.
So they're going to wear a mask throughout the game as they're playing and-
And the only, the only exception obviously is if the athlete comes out of competition and needs a quick drink of water. But the expectation is they would put that right, right on after that. No spectators at, at any of, of the venues. But I think I updated you last time that we had worked with the National Federation for the Pixelot system. Those boxes are sitting in my office and we are going to work to get those installed in the gym at EL before that first game, January 11th.
So you're, they filmed the game, is that what you're doing?
We'll be live streaming the, the contest. One of our challenges this fall was not having the, the internet access at our facilities where we play field hockey and soccer. And we, we got some good feedback that that's something that we would really, we really need to, to provide that service to our parents and grandparents and, and our other students. So the live streaming will be happening for, for the gym. Ice hockey has Live Barn, which most of the hockey people know about very well. And it is my understanding that the YWCA is going to work with Lewiston High School to use their live streaming system for our swim meets, our virtual swim meets. And Lost Valley, is it, I know that Lost Valley was working to do something to livestream the races that are there for our alpine skiers.
I hope we can, actually, I kind of hope we keep that even after it's over because I think it's a great community, it's a great way to get the community involved in with the high school and sports and, because you know, even if you don't have a child in the high school, you still want to see the basketball game and you still, you know, I think it's a great way to get the community involved.
One of our resources that we've used at Poland Regional, Don King, the athletic administrator, you know, he'll, he'll see a grandmother from Minnesota has logged on to watch a field hockey game or, so I think it's just, it's, it's a nice service to, to give to our community.
We still want you to come.
Do you know if the, for Nordic skiing, is there going to be anything? I know a lot of it is like, oh, look, they went in the woods. Oh, they're back, you know? But will there be something so the parents can see them go in and out of the woods?
So I'm not sure that there's going to be, what we've worked at some of those other venues, and I think they did this at the, the MPA golf championship, was they had live scoring available.
Okay.
And then the, the option is like a Facebook Live, if we could get a parent to, to do that and do a Facebook Live. But I think the, the live scoring was a, was a benefit at, I know at the golf and then at some of the cross-country races as well.
Go.
I know our, our Nordic coach and, and kids are disappointed, this was the year and they were excited to head to the county, to Fort Kent, to the Olympic Training Center. That's where the state meets were going to be held. So we obviously can't do that this year, but, but next year, we'll look forward to making that trip up to the county.
Oh, that's awesome.
Great work, Todd.
Thank you.
This is really important for the kids.
Yes, I'm, I'm excited and our fingers are crossed for Friday morning when we, or Friday afternoon. Dr. Brown usually has some insight on what color we're going to be, so we'll be hoping that we're green.
Thank you for thinking outside the box and really trying to make this work. That's what we need to do, so I appreciate that with the live streaming and-
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion on the table and it was seconded, so ready for a vote. All those in favor to approve the proposed winter sports for 2021? Unanimous motion passes. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Todd, very much for that. Thank you, Scott. Policy BE, school committee meetings, a motion to approve policy BE, school committee meetings for a first read.
Removed.
Thank you, Mr. Simpson. Over there, Mr. Bellknap, thank you. Any questions or comments about that one? Saying none, let's take a vote. All those in favor? And passes, thank you. Policy JLIB, student dismissal precautions, motion to approve policy JLIB for a first reading. Can I have a motion, please?
Removed.
Mr. Bellknap, have a second? Mr. Pussell, thank you. Any questions or comments about that one? Saying none. Take a vote, all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Policy ECAD, hazing, motion to approve policy ECAD for a first reading. Can I have a motion, a motion, please?
Removed.
Pam, Bellknap, any questions or comments on that one? Saying none, vote, all those in favor? Motion passes, thank you. Policy JIF, no, JICFA, student hazing, a motion to approve student hazing for a first read and actually a deletion of this policy. And it was in your packet that explained where that policy actually is, I'm sorry, I don't have it right in front of me, but it's included in another policy. I believe the language was included in another policy. Okay, it's duplicated, yes, in another policy. So therefore, can I have a motion to approve the policy for a first read and deletion, please?
Removed.
Mr. Bellknap, you have a second? Is that you, Mr. Simpson?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, any questions or comments about that one? Yes.
I was voting.
Oh, you're, you're voting. Not there yet.
Oh, sorry.
And I, all those in favor? Oh, thank you, motion passes. All right, ladies and gentlemen, next meeting, December 16th, 6 o'clock, a regular meeting. Any items, future agenda items or request for information at this time? Saying none, you know how to get ahold of Dr. Brown or myself. All right, can I entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting, please?
Removed.
Thank you. I think I heard Pam, Brian, you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All right, all those in favor to adjourn the meeting? Motion passes. Motion, move, meeting is adjourned, 7:20.[1779.04]